Well, why don't we, can I push through the rest of the agenda? And then we'll have time for Sabrina at one and then we'll probably break for good right after that. Not for good, but till then. Okay, well, let's, why don't we, why don't we go to, since, you know, we've had the caveat the last year or so on our agenda that public participation isn't necessarily 1:30. So, we have a few right now, maybe it would be appropriate to take them so that they don't have to wait since they're here.
I do, I have two forms. We'll start with Steve Horn and John Bracy. Mr. Horn is the chair and Mr. Bracy is the executive director of the Michigan Council for the Arts Cultural Affairs.
And you have one of those cool glasses that goes from dark to light, right?
Yeah.
I like that.
Well, thanks for this opportunity. And first of all, I need to apologize. Steve Horn, Chairman Horn, called this morning and is not going to be able to join us. And he, Steve asked me to, in particular, apologize to Ms. Strauss because he was really looking forward to seeing you. You know, often, you can find yourself thinking that you're the center of the universe. I do it all the time, at least my wife says I do. And when you do that, you kind of get the impression that everyone knows what you're doing. And, you know, that's just not true. So, I wanted to take this opportunity, it's been a while since I've been here before you, to tell you a couple of things that the council's been working on and that I think that you'll be interested in. And hopefully, this is a habit that can, we can start getting into. As you know, and this certainly won't be anything innovative, this is far from it. It's a very traditional topic, first of all. Our client base is primarily the arts and cultural organizations in the state of Michigan. And although we do work with some schools, primarily, we work with symphonies and museums. And where you can call up right now on your computer screens and see the Diego Rivera murals at the DIA, or you can hear something that the DSO has played, or you can visit Meyer Gardens and see what's happening there, you can experience it. And we've been hearing for some time from our clients that field trips with schools have been declining at, just at scary rates.
A larby rate.
And so, we decided to test that this year. And even though our funding has been drastically cut, even while we were part of the Department of History, Arts and Libraries, we were experiencing cuts and, of course, those cuts have continued. The council felt very strongly this year that they were going to carve out a small bit of money to see if we couldn't help some of the schools visit some of our clients. And so, we put together a very quick grant program, school bus grants. And we received, I think the turnaround was less than, less than a month, it was right around a month that schools had to complete an application and get it into us. We received 303 applications, far, far more than I was expecting and far more than we could possibly afford to fund. They were just small grants for gas, this is gas money, you know, $500 at the most for a school. I did bring a few copies of the list of those grants. We were able to fund 162 of those schools in 44 counties. So, we tried to spread it around. And I'll leave these for you, you can do what you want. If you would like copies of them electronically, they are on our website by county. I can give you all kinds of this information via an email. So, if you decide you want more. I will say one thing about the school grants, the school bus grants, and that is, it was a huge amount of work and really troubling to read some of the grant applications, and they were small. And Anna Cardona here, within the Department of Education, agreed to read some of the grant applications for us and so, we're indebted to her.
Anna's over here, by the way, on our right, so thank you, Anna.
The, I haven't had the opportunity to actually go through because of the shortness of the timeframe, to tell you how many students are going to be visiting our, some of our clients from those 162 schools. I can't tell you for certain what the percentage of schools that I read, because I read all 303 applications. I would guess that somewhere in that 75%, perhaps larger, of the schools that applied to us said that they no longer had field trips, that this was the only opportunity they had for our students in the state to visit one of our clients.
Thirty minutes, thirty seconds remaining.
Okay, thanks. That being the case.
Some people are Eileen Spade.
But you're gonna take the laughter as all. That being the case, I think that there's a real issue that maybe the council and the board can have further discussions on it. And we want you to know that we stand ready to partner with you in any way that possible. And I'm going to make a much more effort to make sure that you understand everything else that we're doing. The other thing, really quickly, the National Endowment for the Arts Poetry Out Loud competition was held this past weekend. And in all, 30 of the state schools participated, they sent 23 school champions. And in all, at those 30 schools, in the recitation competition, some 4,500 students were involved in learning and reciting poetry and involved in this competition. It was an amazing event, and if you'd like to learn more about that as well. And anytime you have questions, you know I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our other speaker today is Chris Hansen from Lansing, and he is here to speak about math in color. Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me start by complimenting President Strauss on a great choice of color for today. We didn't even call each other and we match.
Right.
That's the non-threatening color, meaning when Obama gave the latest, what was the latest, or when they did at Healthcare Summit, I heard commentators talking about how all the politicians were wearing the blue color ties, because it's one everybody likes, you know, it's not too scary, it's not too mean, it's not too soft, it's just very.
Can't wear my blue ties anymore.
And yet, I see no blue ties here.
I usually have one.
No one's wearing the Tiger Woods red, the hardcore, aggressive color. Anyway, my name is Chris Hansen. I am a teacher in the Lansing School District, and I have been a teacher since 2001. My company is called Hansen Education LLC. I recently invented and patented a color-coded number system that uses four number charts. And I've already sold thousands of these double-sided sheets and hundreds of accompanying handouts, which you have with you today. This covers 37 different grade-level content expectations from grades K through 5. And today, I'd like to share my invention with you and offer the state of Michigan a licensing agreement that would very inexpensively put these in every classroom in the state of Michigan. If you look at the first image, I have a typical multiplication chart, but I assigned a color for every number from 1 through 10. You can easily take the 2, which is red, multiply it by the blue, which is 3, and then you've got 2 times 3 is 6 right inside the box. On the other side, I have nine 100 charts, and all of those show color coding for multiples. This really helps kids skip count and see the patterns. The really significant thing, though, is the composite of these colors. I took one 100 chart and put all the color codes along with the numbers inside the colors on a chart. So, if you look at 48, you can instantly see that 48 is a multiple of 2, 3, 4, 6 and 8, and 47 is a prime number. On the flip side of that, I have a chart from 101 to 200, because this is something that teachers want. Currently, at teacher stores, you cannot get a chart that has 101 to 200. So, I normally sell these for a dollar each sheet and $6 for posters like this. And like I've said, I've already sold hundreds of the posters and thousands of the handouts. And I have an offer from a major publishing group to purchase the patent, but I don't want to do that because that would basically be a buy and die. What they do is they buy it from me, it would never see the light of day, it would never help kids learn because they just want to keep the status quo. However, I am willing to offer the state a licensing agreement for $1 per student, and then the state could print as many copies as they feel necessary from a Michigan printing company. You could get sheets like this for less than 10 cents a piece, posters for less than a dollar a piece. And there's an explanation of how that works on the page right here that kind of shows how that would end up saving the state a lot of money and, like John said earlier, have a major system change rather than just a small pilot, something that would be inexpensive yet effective. This is something that works. It is based on research. I have a master's from Central Michigan University, and I developed this while I was at Central Michigan University. There are 23 different studies that support colorated learning. I have many testimonials from different teachers. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to share this with you. So, thank you very much. Please look it over and please contact me regarding this.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
I could get one other form.
I know we have creative teachers.
From Eric Hinkel from Grand Rapids, here representing the Resource Heating Solutions.
Basically, what I'm here to talk about is a program that was developed by a school district in Purdy, Missouri, and it was funded by the company that I rep, or I don't represent, where the manufacturers rep for them, that's a Clean Burn Waste Oil Furnace. And it was a recycling program that set, was set up by the Purdy, Missouri Spanish Club. And they set up this whole program where they did all recycling and they actually turned it into a profit so that they were able to offer scholarships, were able to do class trips, were able to do stuff like that. And not only were they doing that, but they were offering a service to the community as far as recycling. The reason why Clean Burn funded it is because Clean Burn, it makes a furnace that burns on used crankcase oil, transmission fluid, all that kind of stuff. And where, one of their major sources for their oil to heat their facility while, you know, they were doing all their work in there and everything like that, came from their school bus fees, because they produce all the waste oil and everything like that. So, they were, you know, recycling that, the school wasn't having to pay to have the oil hauled away, they weren't having to pay to have their oil filters taken away. We actually have probably about four or five school districts in the state of Michigan right now that have these furnaces that are just running them at their current facilities. One of them, Zeeland Public Schools, has had it for 15 years, and by having this furnace has probably saved their heating bill on that building $100,000 over 15 years on a purchase of a $5,000 furnace. So, you know, they paid $5,000 and have saved over $100,000. I know Michigan offers the, you know, free state-funded program for energy efficiency. The Clean Burn furnaces completely fall within the energy efficiency program, so there's grants out there that, for the schools that can purchase the units and also to start up recycling programs for the schools themselves where they can, you know, I mean, it takes, Michigan, you know, because we're trying to look at ourselves as a green state, to bring in green jobs and to do, you know, things like that. We're in the school now, we can actually have programs where we're teaching the kids about green jobs, where they're actually participating in green jobs. So, when they're, you know, a kid graduates from a Michigan school, they've been educated in the process of, you know, what it takes to be green, not just the recycling end of it, but the business end of it, too, because they'll be, they'd be working a recycling center not only just to, you know, take in papers and recycle and whatnot, they'd be doing it for profit so that they can make money to fund, and like I said, scholarship programs, activities for the school, like the other gentleman was talking about, you know, to take a field trip that would have cost $500, which could have easily been funded through doing, you know, something like this. So, it not only helps out the school districts on saving money, helps them out on being energy efficient, positive image for recycling, you know, and as far as, you know, with the students goes, it gives them another sort of education into certain fields that they would normally not get education in, which, you know, in the world right now, that's starting to become a very large part of where the job market can be going, is in the green area, the recycling area, the, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, you know, and what I am also proposing, too, on the deal is to help out the Michigan schools, I've got it in the deal here, that we are, as Resource Heating Systems, not just for Clean Burn, but are offering a 20% off price for, from the list price on the furnaces to any school district that wants to participate, because being in Michigan myself, you know, I want to see Michigan grow itself, and I'm willing to put this out there to the school districts so that they can, you know, I know all school districts are financially strapped, and if this is something that maybe $500, $1,000 is gonna stop them from saving, you know, $100,000 or $100,000 over the period of time, I'm willing to take that hit myself to help out the school district.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That's it on public participation. Why don't we go into the regular meeting? Good afternoon, I guess it is. The time is now 12:52, and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of March 9, 2010 is called to order. The first item is the approval of minutes in regular committee of the whole meeting of February 9. Is there a motion?
So, move.
It's moved by Cass, supported by Cassandra. Any changes, are all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same. Second item is approval of minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting of February 17.
I move approval.
By Liz, supported by John. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you.
We approve your ninth, too. We had two sets of minutes.
Can he get a vote?
No, I did the ninth first.
Can we do a phone check? Mary Ann?
Hello?
Nancy? Okay, I just want to make sure we get the vote.
Okay.
They're present for me.
Yeah, we got enough.
Cass, the president's report, please.
Well, it was an interesting month, in more ways than one, I think, the last regular meeting and then this special meeting. I just wanted to say that Reggie and Cassandra and I were at a forum that, the Future of Detroit, just about a month ago, that was sponsored by the Brookings Institution and Time Magazine. And John Austin was one of the panelists, and not only was he one of the panelists, but he was the one who organized the whole thing, his hat as a Brookings Fellow, and he was very eloquent, as always. We were very proud of you.
I'm only sorry I didn't get a chance to shout out my fellow board members in that particular conference.
It was really, it was quite an impressive gathering of hundreds of people, and it was a big, big gathering. And the other speakers were Mayor Dave Bing and Steve Hamp, who's been involved in this program of creating the 35 charter schools in Detroit, new schools who will be small and supposedly good. And Steve and Gray, who's the reporter from Time Magazine, I don't know if all of you know, Time Magazine has bought a house in Detroit, and they have a group of reporters who are there full-time, and they, I guess, looking at Detroit to see what happens to a city, and whether it can come back, and so on and so forth. So, it was really quite interesting. And Carol Goss from the President of the Skilman Foundation was the other speaker. So, it was quite an impressive.
And Mayor Bing.
Mayor Bing, I mentioned him, and it was quite impressive that John was the major domo, so we were very proud of you. And then Liz and I were at the Floyd Elementary School in Midland, actually, the Bullet Creek School District, last week to read, it was part of March reading month, and they invited us to read to the kids, which is always fun. But they, we, I read to a kindergarten and a first-grade class, and Liz read to a first-grade, second-grade class. And the kids are very responsive, little kids are so into it. Kindergarten class, I read to them in the first-grade class, they knew the book that we all did it together, they sort of did it from memory, and it was fun. But then, the principal invited us to have lunch with students, one from each class in the building. And that was really interesting, because they were very natural, and they tell you what's on their minds, and they really know what's going on. So, it was very good, because the school, obviously, is a good school, and the principal is very sharp. And he has, he does what we say people, the school people should do, which is invite policymakers into the building to see what goes on. He had had Dave Camp, Congressman Dave Camp, had read to the kids at 84, and he said he was so glad to be there because the kids didn't know who he was, and he could be himself, didn't have to say anything special, or be careful what he said, the kids just liked him.
I'd have a break for me.
I thought Carolyn would like that.
They like him, they really like him.
Yeah.
Sally feels.
And he had, when we were coming and the previous reader was leaving, and he was the anchorman for the television station. So, then he interviewed us both, but I don't know if we ever got on television, we never heard about it, any interviews playing, actually. But he was bringing in, and he was having members of the legislature the following day, the rest of the week. So, he was doing it just the way you're supposed to, but when you walk into the building, there's a big sign on it that says, "School of Academic Excellence," and that's what their whole thing is geared to achieving. And the kids are a very diverse group, from very poverty-stricken to pretty wealthy. And the boy that was sitting across from me at lunch was the student council president of the fifth grade, and he plans to go to Harvard. And I said, "Well, you know, Harvard isn't the only college, you know." "Oh, I know I could go to Yale." But the, and the little girl was the secretary of the student council, was very articulate kids. Liz had a great time, because they, one of the kids brought a book over, and they're looking at the book, and she found a word she didn't know, Liz didn't know it, the principal didn't know it, they couldn't, they brought a dictionary, it wasn't in the dictionary, they got a better dictionary, it wasn't in that dictionary. But Liz got home, she looked at an underbreeze dictionary and found the word and emailed them immediately to, that it really was a word, it wasn't a misprint or a typo.
We thought we had found a typo, we were so excited, but we didn't just find it.
But when we were there, we were there, it happened to be Dr. Seuss's birthday, his 106th birthday, and one of the teachers was dressed up like the Cat in the Hat character with the hat. And in the afternoon, they were gonna have a birthday party to celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday. So, the, talking about engaging students in their learning, they really were engaged and excited, it was, it was really good to see.
Kathleen, this is an added to that Congressman Camp's father-in-law died last week.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and the service is tomorrow.
Oh.
So, that would have been somewhere in that timeframe.
Oh, that's interesting, maybe it was the next day or something.
I thought they said Tuesday, and I was surprised they were keeping him that long, but I don't know.
That's interesting. Hmm. Well, anyway, that was a fun visit, it's a great way to get into a school and see what's going on. So, then Liz, Nancy and I attended this conference that I mentioned, the MSU College of Education Conference on Internationalism, Internationalizing Education. And the speaker of the morning was really outstanding, his name is Kai Vasher. He's the operational director of the Specialist School and, what is this, I can't read my own writing, Something Trust in London, England. And he showed, he was using the internet the whole time and showed what kids do with it. One kid decided, he's gonna go around, run around the world, dancing in every capital, not necessarily capital cities around the world, and kids were learning geography from this. I mean, it was just fascinating. He did it on his own, then he managed to get funding so he could keep going for a year, he did it for a couple of months on his own. And they're very creative, and they can do things that we don't even think of, at least I don't even think of, but they, just what was said here today, the kids think differently today, and they use the computer and texts, and phones, and texting, and whatever they do, so much, that they don't, they don't even think, I saw a comic strip yesterday with it, they talk about the newspaper, and the newspaper, and the kid says, "What's a newspaper?" You know, kids don't even know, a lot of them, they don't know what a newspaper is. Well, they won't in a couple of years, you know. It's just, it's just a different way of thinking, and how do you engage students in their own education? That was the focus of this whole talk, and it can be done, and they, where this Kai is, is in a, not a rich area at all, he works in an area of poor, working-class neighborhoods, and they had got, they'd done this. And Barbara Markle said that she had visited some of the schools that they're in, and she said, "It really is amazing, it really works, the way they approach it." So, there are different ways of looking at things, and they're using a lot more online, as these folks said today. So, that's really personalized training, and it's, it's really very interesting. And then in the afternoon, there were very interesting breakout sessions. I attended one with Bill Skilling, the superintendent of Oxford. And I had been there, what was the last Blue Ribbon presentations we had, when they had two of their elementary schools receive Blue Ribbons, and they had the presentation, they had the kids come to the high school, and among the things that they did was they had a little orchestra. Well, one of the, Bill's approach is that academics, arts and athletics are all three important for educating kids. And because of that, he started this orchestra. And they're now up to 500, 300 kids in the orchestra, and various orchestras, and they, he's hoping to get 500. And when he came, he said, just before he took office, he went to a board meeting and they were debating what they should charge for pay-to-play and for athletics. And he, they asked him what he thought, and he said, "Well, I'm gonna recommend that you eliminate pay-to-play." He thought that athletics are important for all kids to participate, they shouldn't be charged for. So, one of the first things he got the board to do was eliminate pay-to-play and agree to refund the money to the parents who had already paid. So, they refunded $80,000 to parents, and it made the news, the national news, he was on the Today Show, he said a lot of things. But he is very creative and imaginative, and what he said, he was, he heard a presentation by Dennis Toffolo, who was the deputy executive in Oakland County in charge of economic development, and he talked about the international companies that were, that were already in Oakland County, and how many he expected to see in the next couple of years, something like 2,000 and up to 5,000 companies. And Bill Skilling's reaction was, "Well, if they're gonna attract a lot and get all these companies to come here, what do our kids need?" And so, he asked a question, I said, "Foreign languages." He said, "Absolutely." So, they teach Spanish and Mandarin Chinese. And because he believes in the arts, the third foreign language, it's not a foreign language, the third language is music. So, all kids from kindergarten on get music, and one of the, is Spanish or Mandarin, and they, he wants them all to be, not only be able to read it, but be proficient and fluent in speaking it by the fluent in speaking it by the time they leave eighth grade. And they will get it every year from the time they are in kindergarten. So there are all kinds of things and he said, one of the things he got rid of because he had to be able to do this was home ec. He said they were still teaching home economics, not that that's not important, but this is more important at this point. They can get that in other ways. So there are, he's full of ideas and the people were just gobbling, the people in the audience were just gobbling up these ideas. So there are interesting things going on in the schools of Michigan, very creative. And when, and I know, I'm one who doesn't, I don't like all the standardized testing, too much of it and all this stuff. It doesn't mean because we have standardized testing that you cannot be creative. And as, as Mike said, the frameworks give them the freedom to be creative. Instead of seeing it as a restriction, he sees it as an opportunity. That's half the battle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oxford, by the way, is.
Seeing the glass, seeing the glass is half full or is it half empty?
Oxford's one of our Project Reimagine districts, as you know, and has a number of waivers.
Well, he said he made the commitment that they were going to do it whether they got a grant from Race to the Top or not. They're already doing it.
Yeah.
So, and on top of all that, he has actually, I didn't want to say this before Iris was here, but he's actually increased their fund equity from a couple of million to five million or something like that, if I remember the figures correctly. So then that night, with the three of us, well Nancy went with her husband, but Liz and I went to Ward Cliff Elementary School where Rob Stevenson, our wonderful teacher of the year, has started this so-called science convention, which started with his third graders. But now over the years, it's grown to include the whole school. And the kids were there with their families and their siblings and he had speakers from the Abrams Planetarium and from other places. But the kids were so engaged, again, they were explaining their projects to us. These teachers in the third grade is explaining the science. I don't think I ever learned that in school. I mean, it's just amazing. And Rob's classroom is fantastic. It's like a miniature planetarium. He's got things all over the walls, it covers the walls, the ceilings, you turn out the lights, you see the stars. And kids were coming in and showing their parents their classroom. They were so pleased with it. And he really is the teacher of the year. He is an adult. But that was a very rewarding experience as well. So I think that's, yeah, that's my report for the, for the day.
Great. We probably only have like two minutes of business and then we could go, I know Sabrina Keeley is here, and then we could end with that. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So I'm going to forego my report and, but are there any questions on the, on the items in the report? Okay. Then we can move to consent agenda.
And move we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Liz, supported by Reggie. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Any comments by board members at this time?
I just want to give a PS to our reading day in Midland because it was, it fits with the kind of comments we've heard about technology and everything today. So I was talking with the sixth graders about all the ways that you use reading and, and one of them, they were guessing all things. And one kid said maps. And I said, "So how do you use reading with a map?" And the little girl said, "Well, you can read the name of the cities and the states." Or you could just get a GPS.
Different world.
Second grade. So just get a GPS.
Well, thank you. And I know, is Kathy or John going to make the formal introduction of our guest?
I think John will.
John, and please, John.
Sabrina, please join us. Thank you too for being available.
Yeah.
You've seen, I think Sabrina, the last few months, our efforts to reflect on and then inform some recommendations we want to make about education from early childhood really to higher ed, revenues, reforms and investment needs and opportunities as well as restructuring needs and opportunities informed by the good work that many folks in Michigan are doing to try to help us see how we structure our education system to be effective. And appreciate your willingness on behalf of the Business Leaders from Michigan. Sabrina is the deputy or chief operating officer. Many of you know Doug Rothwell, who, and Sabrina recently sort of renamed and expanded the mission, I gather, of Detroit Renaissance to focus on the statewide needs and opportunities. And so appreciate the work you've done and appreciate your sharing with us, sort of your analysis and your set of recommendations for how we think about our state's current economic position, budget and education-related implications of those as much as you're eager to share and guide us in our, in our consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk to you. I know you've had some very esteemed speakers before me this morning, some of whom we've worked with. I have a PowerPoint I'd like to share and I think, did you say Bee?
Bee as in boy.
Here we go.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, which one of the, there we go, okay. I also have here, actually, we put together something that we call our Michigan Turnaround Plan, that we've been having around the state. So this is a copy of the PowerPoint, this is the full report. If you want a copy of that. I would just like to take a minute to tell you who we are. As Business Leaders from Michigan, we are a membership organization comprised of about 75 of the state's most prominent company CEOs, four university presidents. We represent over four, I'm sorry, 300,000 jobs throughout the state, representation in every county in the state and over a trillion dollars in annual revenue and over 100,000 higher education students. And I say that not to tout who we are, but to show that my members are very invested in the state. They live here, they've got hundreds of thousands of employees here. They are very much concerned about the talent that is coming out of our system. So they're, they're very committed to this endeavor. There we go. No, that's not. Okay, Eileen, what am I doing wrong?
I'm coming.
Yeah. Actually, on the left. Oh, in the, sorry, the other left.
Yeah, the other right.
Thank you. I'm going to touch on just a little bit, this was the impetus for our members coming together to put together a plan, but the downside of where we are, we've got tremendous problems in our state that everyone is trying to gather around to solve. Since the year 2001, out of every two jobs lost in the state have been in Michigan. Frankly, I think it's been about 60%. Only 25% of those job losses have been from the automotive sector. Businesses pay on average in Michigan a three to four percentage point profit penalty to be here. We've got declining population growth, declining per capita income, and no real plan that everyone has gathered around to try to fix this. These slides just show how we've been below the national average in terms of population growth, in terms of our per capita income is now 37th, soon to reach 40th. We used to be much, much higher in the state. We are, the tax revenue coming into the state, as you are seeing, flat or declining, with the exception of that little bump up in 2007, which was the tax increase. Spending priorities for the state, this is how we've looked from 2000 to 2009 in just a handful of categories. You can see the dotted line is the inflation rate. We like to look in particular at corrections and higher ed as a comparison. And then of course, revenue sharing to cities. We don't necessarily think that these should be the right priorities for our state, understanding that needs dictate some of this, but we think we need to be more proactive in setting some of the priorities. This just really talks, is designed to show how we rank compared to a lot of our competitor states or the top 10 states in the country on a number of business climate issues. And so really, no matter which factors you look at, whether it's labor, regulatory costs, taxes, energy costs, we tend to be at the bottom end of the scale. And reality, the facts on the left side, on the right side is even if it's just perception, perception makes a difference. So from CEOs and site location consultants, year after year after they're surveyed, you'll see for the last several years, we have been ranked 48th out of 50th in the state. Again, this gets to the, what I just mentioned in terms of labor costs, energy costs and taxes. So we digested a whole lot more information than this and came around the table and my member said, "We've got to do something. What do we want to do? We need to start with the goal." And the goal that we agreed upon was, we should want to make our state top 10 in terms of job and economic growth. Used to be there several decades ago. We'd like to get our state there again, recognizing it's going to take a long time. So in the short term, we are looking at, can we just be above average? And we hear a lot from people who are saying, "Well, we're only average in this or we're average in that, you know, we're not that bad off." We don't happen to think average is a good thing. We'd like to be much better than average. This will give you an idea, just picking a couple of factors, per capita income, job growth and unemployment rate, where we stood in 2007 before the current recession and if we had been in the top 10 at that time, where we would be. So per capita income would be almost $7,000 more, almost 900,000 more jobs between 2000 and 2007 and a much lower unemployment rate. So the gist of our plan that we think can get us to this top 10 status is Michigan Turnaround Plan, it's a five-step plan that will, step one, change the way we manage our finances at the state level. Step two would be right sizing and enacting structural budget reforms. Step three would be making our state more competitive to attract and retain jobs. Step four, making investments that create a great job environment. And step five, accelerating job growth through innovation and entrepreneurship. I'm sure some of this will come as no surprise to you and you've probably heard some of this from John Bebo this morning, some of these similar forms, reforms. In terms of changing the way we manage our finances, we'd like to see two-year budgets. We'd like to see the private sector involved in some of the revenue estimating that the analysts do for the state. We would like to see the picture for the state's revenues and expenses plotted out for more than a one-year timeframe. So we know problems are coming up in 2012. We know it right now, we're looking at 2010, 11, 12, 13, 14. And yet the legislature is focused on the budget for 2011 and if they can patch it together with enough federal stimulus money, we know there's a big cliff we're all going to be falling off of in 2012. So we'd like to see a longer-term forecast. Lot of reforms that are on the table. Bottom line, put it simply, is we'd like to see our government live within its means. There have been some really tough decisions and a lot of cuts have been made over the last many years, but the problem has not gone away, still a real big problem. And so we've identified a number of reforms. They don't all have to be the ones we've identified, but some include state employee concessions because like any business, government's biggest costs tend to be on the labor side. So looking at state compensation levels, workforce levels, co-pays for employee premiums.
Sabrina, can we just, Nancy or Mary Ann, did you just join us? Anybody on the phone?
Yes, I did.
Oh, good.
I never left, I've been here the whole time.
Okay, we weren't sure, but thank you. So Nancy Danhough and Mary Maguire. Sabrina Keeley is sharing Business Leaders from Michigan presentation, which I don't know if they have the PowerPoint email to them. Okay, we'll try to do that. Sorry, Sabrina.
Okay. Continuing on, some additional reforms would be at the local government and school district level to encourage service sharing, whether it's transportation services, food services, custodial services. What can we do to encourage some of our 1,800 units of local government and over 500 school districts to look at sharing some backend services? Not necessarily consolidating governments or districts, but sharing some backend services that could perhaps save some, some money. Looking at additional reforms in the correction system. We have seen from a National Center for Justice report that we tend to put away more people for longer periods of time and it costs us more than most of the other Great Lakes states. So we'd like to see some reforms that would bring our costs in line because there's significant costs and they continue to dramatically increase every year in the correction system. And perhaps now because our budget is so constrained, we could look at eliminating optional services that we provide that the federal government doesn't provide or those services that are duplicated from what the federal government provides. And we'd like to see a reform of our business tax structure. We're currently anywhere between 27th and 34th, 35th worst, depending on which measure you use. We think it would be helpful to look at putting together a system that makes us more competitive so it would reduce the business tax costs, would also provide a more stable revenue base for the state and would look at the growing economy. And right now, we tend to tax products, manufacturing, excuse me, we all know we're becoming more and more of a service economy and we're ignoring that whole component. So we have a tax proposal that would extend the sales tax to services and reducing the overall rate along a number of things. But it would provide a more stable revenue base for our state and would work significantly towards bumping us up in terms of being more competitive for a business cost structure. And the last two steps of our plan really focus on investing in the future and what kinds of things should we be doing? We have not fleshed this component out as much because we don't have the revenues at this point in time and the fire before us is really on the, the revenue side. But we believe that we should be investing, we should be prioritizing our expenses. We've really not do, done that as much in the past. We've had the luxury of being a fairly rich state. We are now quite a poor state. And we think we should be putting our, our state monies into areas that are going to give us the longest-term economic impact, things like higher education, things like infrastructure, things like reinvesting in our cities, our urban areas. And recognizing that we have this tremendous asset of the Great Lakes and how can we, excuse me, invest around that to help us out over the long term? So for education, you probably have much better data than we had on this, but we show performance, our spending is at eighth highest level in the country and performance is at 34th. So we'd like to see some improvement there. We'd like to see an increase in investments to higher education scale. Maybe we can't afford to have 15 universities around the state. Maybe we have to look at where our strengths are, identify those that we can support and rationalize the others. Maybe we need an overall body like this, one that oversees all of the universities in the state. We don't have all the right answers, but we're putting proposals out there. We'd like to make sure that we have top-notch infrastructure. You've probably all experienced our declining roads. We've got issues with roads, bridges. We think it's important that we maintain really top-notch transportation infrastructure, that we have great freeway connectivity to adjoining states, excuse me, that we have mass transit and dense population areas. We think it's really important to have an urban agenda, to reinvest in our cities, that we have a comprehensive Great Lakes strategy. There is a lot of research and discussion about the younger generation and the knowledge worker and what are they interested in and how do we maintain them? We know that, that vibrant cities are very important to them. We know that mass transit is very important to them and we think we need to look at investing in those types of things. We also think it's important to reward areas that are collaborating across the state. So whether it's grants or incentives or other types of things that the state does, we think it would be helpful to encourage, maybe with a carrot and a stick approach. So if you got a group of cities that are willing to work together and a couple other that are not, you incent and give a little more to those that are willing to collaborate on a regional level. We think it'd be important to look at all of the policies that the, governing of the programs and services that the state provides and really look at how do we enhance, how do we reward those that are collaborating regionally and not reward those that are not? We'd like to see more support go into innovation and entrepreneurship, excuse me, across all sectors rather than targeting specific industries. Things like expanding business accelerators and incubators, so expanding their capacity so they can take on more. We know entrepreneurship is a real big key for helping us grow jobs for the future. And also looking at developing strategies that leverage our key assets, engineering, for example. There are some who have taken some pot shots at the MEDC. We tend to support what they do. We think there's a very important need for what they do, but we think perhaps they can tailor their strategies a little more differently than what they've done in the past. So we put together this plan last fall. We've been around the state talking to virtually everybody about it. We've shared it with the media, we've shared it with legislators, with local communities. We've got the support, endorsements of about 75% of the major newspapers in the state. We've gotten support from several major organizations and associations, Democrats, Republicans. We're kind of spreading the word, if you will. We will in the next 30 or so days be launching a much larger, broader public information We're kind of taking three different tracks on this. We've got a legislative agenda that is comprised of 10 steps of the overall plan. We've been working top-down, bottom-up. We continue to work with the governor and the legislative leaders. We also continue to work with individual legislators, particularly a group of freshmen that is very anxious to see some things change. Small print here in our legislative agenda, 10 items. We don't feel that we necessarily have all the answers. So these are 10 that we picked. They can be somebody else's 10. They can be a combination of, of other groups. We just like to see some significant. We don't feel that we necessarily have all the answers, so these are 10 that we picked. They can be somebody else's 10. They can be a combination of other groups. We just like to see some significant reforms that are going to be made that are going to help us fix the structural deficit that our state faces. We have formed a Local Action Committee. The members are very serious about this. We've got questionnaires out to all of the gubernatorial candidates. We'll be interviewing them soon, and we'll be sending the questionnaires out to all candidates running for any legislative office, House or Senate. And we are going to be ranking them solely on their support for this type of turnaround plan. So, we'll be contributing financially, publicly, with endorsements, all based on primarily what's in our plan. Are they willing to take the tough steps that we feel need to be taken? And then, lastly, we have a webpage and a whole viral Twitter and Facebook and all that good stuff. So, I will stop there. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So, who are our today's gubernatorial candidates?
Part.
You're in a day, you're out a day.
Right.
Coming to a norm here. Michael Patrick Shields asked me on the air, by the way, and I said, "No, I am not a candidate."
There's still time.
There's still time. Board member, questions, comments, please.
Well, first, let me thank you. We're really pleased to have you here, Sabrina. Thank you very much for coming. And I know that you put in, the business leaders as a group has put in a lot of thought, a lot of time and effort and thought into this, and it's highly regarded, so we're very glad to have it as part of the mix that we're going to, we're going to try to come together and make some recommendations of our own, based on everything we've heard from you and all the other groups that we've heard from. We had the MEA here this morning and the AFT Michigan, and we've had the school administrators and school boards and principals and all the school associations. We've had economists, left, right and center. So, we've really tried to get a section of all the groups and views that are out there and see if we can come together and make some kind of a bipartisan recommendation to the legislature and the governor, so it helps solve the dilemma that we're, so we really appreciate your being here. John, you want to ask a question?
Yeah, just appreciate very much the comprehensive and balanced approach that you all have ended up advocating, and particularly, from my point of view, the recognition that there are sort of long-term investments that matter to our economy, whether it's our infrastructure or education or higher education, and that, and that there's a combination of reforms and cost savings and efficiencies that are really important. But can you, you also are suggesting that there is a structural sort of deficit on the revenue side, that some combination of changes, a business tax change and an extension of the sales tax. What is the exact nature of the business tax change and the extension of the sales tax that you all are recommending, or anything else that's kind of on the, changes on how we raise money side?
Sure, thank you. I'm sorry, I did not clarify that. The business tax change would be elimination of the surcharge that was enacted a couple of years ago, the MBT surcharge, and it would be a reduction of the gross receipts tax rate in that surcharge from .8% to .45%. The governor's proposal recommends elimination of the surcharge over a couple of years and a reduction in the gross receipts rate from .8% to .6%. So, ours would take it a little further. And the revenue coming in, so you would drop the sales tax rate on goods from 6% to 5.5%, and then you would extend that sales tax rate to services, not business-to-business services, not housing, education, or healthcare, or any other services, or anything else that's currently taxed. It is revenue-neutral in this current fiscal year, 2010, but over time provides additional revenue to the state. So, I appreciate, John, you raising that, because I want to say, we don't, we don't feel, I mean, we're here representing the big business community and some higher ed, just taking care of that tax problem for the business community is not enough. We recognize that, nor is just, you can't just cut your way out of this budget. We recognize that. So, we're creating enemies all the way around. We think you need to do the budget reforms, the tax reform, and the priorities for spending longer term.
Please. Thank you, first of all, for this and for sharing the plan, and for the thoughtful work that all of you have been doing. I think all of us appreciate it and want to be there. In terms of your step four, investing in our future, obviously, there's lots of investments one can make. But one that I don't know if it was discussed, it's not here, is the investment in early childhood education, because if our young people don't arrive at school with the capability of learning, they really don't ever catch up. And so, the higher education opportunities become moot, because they just never got the, and we do have long-term research that shows the economic return on investment in early childhood education, the high-scope studies, and there's other. So, it may have been something you all talked about, and it's just not here on the PowerPoint, and if so, I apologize for that, but I think it's something that's worth putting in the mix for the long-term investment in our state. And then, the other thing I wanted to say is, how much conversation do you all have with other state leaders? I mean, you have a very good widespread intra-Michigan group. Is there, are there conversations with other states that are?
When you say leaders, other state leaders?
Business leaders. I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, are we getting ideas from Massachusetts, from Pennsylvania, from the southern states, you know?
We have, McKinsey and Company is represented on our board, and so they do benchmarking for us. We have our members who are located in other states, so they talk to governors of those states, and they talk to our peers. I could not say to you, here are the five ideas we've gotten from each of those states, but there are conversations, maybe not to the degree that you're thinking.
I'm just thinking, because Michigan's a peninsula, I've lived in a lot of different states, and I've always thought it was very interesting that in Michigan, we talk to each other all the time, and we don't seem to talk to anybody that's out there, and I know stuff's going on out there.
There is.
And because we're not on, you know, you have to make a decision to come visit Michigan when you're going east-west, you can go straight across the bottom and never come here. So, I always, I used to call it "peninsular thinking," but, so I'm always looking to see, are we reaching out? Are we grabbing ideas from other places and having those conversations? Like you say, some of these people have to work in all those states, and they may be bringing that to the conversation.
And let me also say, we have, as I mentioned, McKinsey does a lot of work for us, and we're going to be coming out with a new benchmarking study, where they benchmark us nationally later this month. So, I can make sure you get a copy of it.
That would be very interesting.
And it's not just business issue, I mean, it's quality of life, it's perception, it includes things like, we rank really poorly on quality of life, but when people get here and say, I mean, we have phenomenal, we compete with some of the best, but people don't get it. So, the perception's not so great there. So, I'd be happy to share that with you. And just to your point about early childhood, we have not fleshed out all of the steps four and five we're doing that, so I'll be happy to make a note to look at that. I know our office is in Detroit, and I know the United Way down there has really got a big push on early childhood.
But you all did not sort of discuss, debate it, and reject it?
Right.
No, no. I just wanted to raise its profile.
Grand Haven Holland came in number two in quality of life just recently, that little area. I think it was Cassandra and then Reggie, please.
First of all, thank you, Liz, for bringing up the early childhood, because I totally, I work for higher education, so I love the fact that you guys have higher ed in your priorities, but you have to start from the beginning and then get up to the higher ed. I have a question. On slide 14, you talk about the labor and benefit cost, and you say that the state employees in Michigan make, on average, $17,000 more than the private sector. What exactly are you comparing there?
We're talking average wages. So, it's, I think it's $57,000 for the average state employee wage and $40,000 for the average private sector employee wage, and it is, the $57,000 is $3,500 more than the national average for state employees.
Okay. Do you guys?
How much higher than the national?
$3,500, not as much.
$3,500. Do you factor in education levels?
You know, we've looked at that, because I know someone else had come out, and they felt it was not a good measure. So, I'd be happy, I don't have all the data at my fingers, I'd be happy to measure it for you, or to get you the information, but they looked at it and didn't feel it was an accurate comparison, just to use their words.
Right, right. I guess that's, I would just, you know, express a little bit of concern when we, you know, compare apples to oranges, because I don't think it's quite fair when we expect our state employees to have, you know, the education level that we expect of them, and then compare them to individuals in another sector that might be a completely different expectation of them.
But my board members would tell you, they all expect their employees to have pretty high education levels. So, I mean, I'd be happy to get the information for you, but if you look even at just how our state, and this is not, again, I used to be state employee, so I have tremendous respect. I know they work really, really hard, but when you look even nationally, the wages are higher. And again, when you have only a dollar and you have to cut it, I mean, how do you, there's only so many ways you can slice the pie. It's just trying to get the budget balance is what these are designed to do.
Yeah, thank you. I would just throw that caution out there.
Reggie, please.
Sabrina, thanks for being here. We appreciate your, sharing your ideas with us, and we appreciate all the hard work that went into it. I think that Detroit Renaissance, now Business Leaders for Michigan, has been playing a very, very important role in our state for a long time. I support the broader focus to become Business Leaders for Michigan, and I know that you still have an urban agenda in your platform, and there were some people who were concerned that that might go away. I don't, but we know, business leaders understand that the state needs a strong urban center to attract the kind of folks that we need to help us build a 21st-century economy. I think that your plan, like John said, is very balanced. It requires some sacrifices all the way around. I mean, we're going to pay higher taxes in years going forward, and I think there are people in the state who are prepared to do that, but I think that in exchange for that, there has to be some recognition that the sacrifice has to go all the way around. And I think this is, that this is a time for shared sacrifice to make the investments that we need to make in our state for the future, and it appears to me that your plan seeks to create that balance. We heard some of the difficulties in striking that balance pointed out earlier. Just take corrections, for example. The numbers are just staggering in terms of the growth in our corrections budget over the course of time. In 1973, it was less than 4% of our general fund budget. Today, it's over 20% of our general fund budget, and the statistics as we compare ourselves to other states and other nations, I mean, it's just way out of whack. But, you know, the headlines over the weekend is, you know, you let people out. You know, who do you let out, and what do you do with them? Are you, have you, I guess, sharing in Liz's point, have you, have we looked at any best practices for other states that have lower incarceration rates? I mean, what are they doing differently that Michigan is not doing, so that they can achieve these lower incarceration rates?
There is a National Center for Justice that studied here, and I don't know if John Bebo mentioned that earlier, but they came back with some recommendations, must have been last spring, and they are the ones that, I mean, they came out with a number of recommendations, and it is true, we put people away for longer, we, it costs us more to do that. We need to look at, not just, we need to look at the administrative side, but we also need to look at the sentencing guidelines and some of the reforms, and that picks people really, really nervous. But, to your point, what was in the paper this morning, and I will tell you, I'm here this afternoon, instead of this morning, because I've been with the governor and Dylan and Bishop, and we keep going in circles, like, how do we get to a compromise? And it is, they're all, I mean, I agree, we have to decide who we're mad at and who we're afraid of. And we have to get over who we're mad at, and let some of them out, and those who we're afraid of, we need to keep them in. So, but there has to be a meeting of the minds, and there, among those three parties, doesn't seem to be a meeting of the minds right now, and when you have, there is a true element of fear out there by some, and then you've taken on the prosecutors and some others, so there are a whole lot of pieces to the puzzle, but if you can get a handful of them together and just agree to put politics and some of the other things aside, maybe you can agree on something. I mean, the governor, I give her credit, has gone quite a ways in cutting some of the corrections expenses. Closed a number of prisons, but, I mean, labor, can you outsource some of the, some of the services, and the labor costs are higher?
Yeah, and I appreciate that additional elimination. So, you have looked at comparisons, and you've made some specific proposals to the governor?
They're not our proposals specifically, there are some. We are, we are looking at, I mean, the Center for Michigan is really, and the Detroit Chamber have really taken on the corrections, I mean, really understood it and spent a lot of time on it, and the Center for Justice report outlined a number of things. Our folks show that you can come up with anywhere around $700 million in savings, so we're saying, okay, well, that's not going to happen, so could we get half? And could we start with even a smaller amount in the first year? I don't know if we can even get there, so.
The other area where I'm struggling, again, not with the concept, but with, you know, how you get from here to there, is with respect to consolidation of services, and really trying to understand how, how we get to best practices, that we don't, that we don't just look for consolidation for the sake of consolidation, but we look at consolidation that will actually produce savings, and try to do that on the basis of results that we've seen from other places.
Good point.
Because I, you know, I mean, you know, not to pick on Detroit, but, you know, it's a big school district, right? And in fact, you know, a lot of people would say part of its inefficiency is because it is so big, right? So, you can, so is there, is there a right size for school districts that seems to work? Is there a, is there a model for doing this, and that would be data-driven, as opposed to sort of intuitive?
I do not have that. I know, just honestly, from reading the papers, there are a number of communities and some school districts that are doing it on their own, because they have no choice.
Right.
We are proposing to provide a carrot, a little incentive financially, with some of the extra money that we could get in the first couple of years, to get them to try it, and then, so they achieve some savings, they get to keep them. Again, I'm lumping in school districts, local governments together, but some of them are being forced to right now, they don't have any choice.
My instinct is that we could achieve a lot of savings by, you know, not having, even if we didn't have four school districts in one small community, you know, that we could have, even if we didn't eliminate those lines because of the community involvement reasons that Dave Hecker talked about earlier, I don't know if you were here for that, but could there be one IT department?
Sure.
Could there be one human resources department? Could there be one payroll department, as opposed to four separate systems? I mean, I, again, intuitively, I think you can achieve some savings in that way, even if you don't break down all the barriers. And so, but I'd like to know where, you know, like to see some examples of how that's happened, and where, you know, some longitudinal studies where people have implemented those kinds of changes, and five years later, everybody agrees, we saved money by doing these things.
I don't know if we've got that. I know that there have been, I've seen through Center for Michigan examples on the local government side. I can certainly look into it and let you know.
That would be great.
That would be helpful.
Kath, please.
I was interested in some of the things you're not for.
That we what, we're not for?
I was interested that you said, "We cannot cut our way out of this situation solely, solve the problem by cutting our way out." So, that coming from you, I think, is very significant.
You know, we know the state can't live on $7 billion. I mean, and people are saying, well, let's just cut $2 billion, let's do this, let's do that. What are we left with?
Right.
But, like I said, so we have enemies everywhere.
Well, I agree with that, but I was very pleased to hear you, as your group, saying that, because.
Well, that's, that's why, starting with that slide, we are very much invested here. It's really important that we have a well-run state, that we can attract other businesses here, that we have educated talent, you know, we have nice cities to live in.
Yeah, and also, just following up on what Reggie was just talking about, that you're focusing on consolidation of services rather than consolidation of districts, per se.
Right.
Because I think, too, that there's, it sounds easy, but why don't you just consolidate districts? It's not as easy as it looks.
It doesn't even sound easy. I know there's a big battle there somewhere.
What David was saying earlier, that the community involvement and the community culture, creating clashes, it might be more problems than they're worth, you know, they create other unintended consequences, so to speak.
We are at such a critical point, and it's just a symbol of it, and I just, I don't mean to offend any state employees in the room, because, again, I was one for many years, but the whole issue right now, where my members just cannot understand, is this hanging 3% raise. So, the state is facing a $1,700 budget deficit, and beyond that, I don't know if you've looked at, we are projecting numbers, because we are trying to mold a package that would keep us in the black through 2014. We haven't seen anybody doing that yet. But, so the idea of you're cutting drastically over and over and over, and relying, the governor's relying on $1 billion in federal money to get us through this year, knowing there's a big cliff next year, how do you give a raise? Not whether people are deserving or not, it's just look at General Motors. How do we change that thinking? How do we change that thinking? We have to turn around and get ourselves on solid financial footing, and then start putting some rewards in place. But, I mean, from what we're seeing, there is not a whole lot of a mindset to change it, and so some of our folks say, if we can't even get through that, is there hope for our state?
Any of these phone people? Any Mary Ann or Nancy, please? As John says, these phone people.
The phone people.
Invisible phones.
Right.
Who insists on speaking, anyone, please? I know I didn't have any questions. I'm happy to see there's a support there for extending the sales tax to all services, and I guess everything is probably on the table at this point. So, and I'm happy to hear the discussions on reducing sentences, particularly, well, just some of the more egregious ones, I guess. So thank you, though, for coming, and I appreciate your time and attention to this.
To that point--
Is this an opportunity?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Okay, Sabrina, thanks so much for your presentation. I'm sorry, it's the very beginning of it, but I'll catch up with someone on that. You mentioned that extending the tax on services. Did I understand you correctly that you would extend it to all services, or could you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. It would extend to all services. It would exempt business-to-business services, it would exempt healthcare, education, and housing, and anything that is already taxed.
Okay.
I don't think there--
So to exempted businesses, who would you then tax?
You're taxing the consumer, you're taxing all the people that work in the businesses, but you're not taxing if you're buying a service that is embedded in what you need to do to provide your business, that would not be included.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And I need to just clarify this point. This is the Business Leaders for Michigan proposal. I'm not speaking for all the other business groups out there, so they would not necessarily be in agreement.
Right.
Can I mention, just, I think, because you were clearly sincere on the, kind of the way that your CEOs are looking at this 3% thing, and I don't report to the governor, but at cabinet meeting, it becomes clear that, for example, right now, most of the unions have conceded wages and benefits for this year. And the catch-22 is, they have a contract in place for next year that would be dealt with at another time. I don't think it's, I don't think it's quite the mindset that it wouldn't be, and it's certainly not an automatic. I mean, this is bargaining units who in good faith have contracts in place and then have to, but I would just say, kind of to counter, or not counter, but a little more information on that, is virtually every group has agreed to cutbacks for this year, and it certainly would infer, perhaps, that when that new contract comes up, they would be willing to look at the same thing, and I didn't want to not give them, you know, credit for that. It comes in the form of either pay cuts or furlough days and some others. And I'm pretty sure the governor, if I'm not mistaken, can't propose that, because she's the one--
Correct.
--who did the bargaining.
She signed the contract, yep.
But I think the legislature and others can, and that's kind of why that seems to be in limbo, is it's a bit of a contradiction in one sense, that it's going on right now for the current year, but hanging out there is this possibility for something else, if I understand that.
Yep.
Liz, please.
Yeah, I was just thinking, in terms of, you know, our transforming our correctional system and trying to deal with people who've been convicted of crimes in new and different ways, the people don't really go away. They, you know, whether there's another alternative means of monitoring behavior and all of that. But I'm thinking, it's not unlike in the '80s, when we transformed the institutional care system for people with developmental disabilities, and there was a resistant employee base in some communities, because they had jobs in towns and everything. But at that time, we had really a very coordinated public information campaign around who the people were, who would be moving back to the community. Plus, we trained people, they would need services in the community, so we actually trained the employees of the current institutional system to become the executives of nonprofit organizations that would provide those services in the community. Today, there's a plethora of nonprofit organizations, and they are run by people who went through the training back in 1978 and '79. I still have the curriculum in my basement, I bet it would be applicable. But what we did, and that, it didn't make everybody happy, but we were able to deliberately transform a system of care and resulting downsizing of big institutional settings. I know Pat Caruso and the governor have worked very, very hard to try to bring down this population, but you're right--
They have, and they've done a great job.
Sentencing guidelines, three strikes and you're out, these things just populate our prisons with, you know, very hard.
Thought it was a great way, you coined the phrase, in effect, treat people we're mad at differently than those we're afraid of. It's an interesting way to think about it.
I can't take credit for it. I'm hearing it a lot, I'm seeing it a lot in print, but it's true.
It's true.
And, you know, we can't continue to spend growing amounts of our limited state resources in the correction system. I mean, it's really sad statement about our state.
It doesn't.
If you net out--
You know, if we switch the priorities, it's so much cheaper to educate a child than it is to house a bit of prison for the rest of his life or something.
You know, it's interesting that on that count, again, I know you've seen this stat, but we're actually down, when you take corrections out, state employee numbers are down 25,000 since the '70s.
They are down, yep.
And yet, the population, even with some of the recent decline, is up 800,000 since that time. So that's part of this conflict that it's hard for folks to see with that ever-growing corrections piece, but appreciate your noting it regularly, because I've heard it in other forums. I know it wasn't just for this. Other board member comments or questions? Thank you so much, Sabrina.
Thank you very much.
Thank you enough for making it.
Very good, very helpful.
I appreciate your being here very much. Thank you.
Thanks for saying nice things about the United Way.
Yeah, yeah.
Always do.
And we got through the business earlier, so I think we're set to have a bite at this point, right?
Yeah.